All right, let's call the meeting by your order. Julie, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Kara Caston.
Here.
Katie Courtney.
Here.
Chris Raspinoza.
Here.
April Feinen.
Here.
Don Runner.
Here.
Michael Risky.
Here.
Rohan Hashim.
Here.
And Jason Trejo.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, having Quorum, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hank, I'll turn it over to you for item number three, recognitions.
All right. I will invite Principal Lip up for some South High recognitions.
Give me a second here. All right, I'm really excited to be here tonight to represent South High. We have two groups here tonight. We have Journalism and Skills USA. Both groups met the criteria to be here, to be recognized, which is a really big deal, and we're really excited about it. We're going to start with Journalism, and I don't see Mary, so I'm going to speak on her behalf. But our Journalism team placed fourth in state for our blueprint. So it's essentially, if you just think of it in terms of sports, which is kind of a more familiar, this is sort of when our newspaper presents and competes at the state IHSA level, and they place fourth as a team. You can see up here that earning that fourth place as a team came with a lot of students doing really, really well. Sebastian is not here tonight, but you've met him multiple times. He was our state champion for IHSA radio. He was also the national champion for radio, and now, once again, he's the state champion in radio news. So we're very sad that he's leaving, or that he left, I guess. Graduation was yesterday. So we celebrated him yesterday. And then, I didn't see anyone, but I might be missing them. Is anyone, Elsa, Sarah, Jade, and Ryan, Kate, here? Okay. So we are just celebrating them happily and celebratory. They've had a lot of success, so I don't think they're burned out on it by any means, but we've celebrated them multiple times. So congratulations to Journalism.
And I will pass these on to Principal Lip, but there are proclamations for Sebastian's first-place finishing, finish, finish, from both the Village of Downers Grove and the Village of Woodridge.
Perfect. All right, so next up is Skills USA. This is the second year in a row that we've been able to celebrate the success of Skills USA here at the board meeting. So I'm going to invite Mark Molinari and Brandy Palmerin to come talk about Skills USA and the amazing success that we had there this year.
Thank you for having us. I'm, thank you on behalf of Brandy, myself, and then Ryan Almberg is coaching a game, volleyball game at Neak when he was not able to be with us tonight. But thank you for support from the board and supporting us. It's, it's one of the larger expenses. We have a lot of kids that, that get involved and, but every year you guys have supported us and gone down there, and we've had a lot of success. And in talking to students to be a part of our club, we talk about competing athletically all the time, as I am a coach, but I think that this is one of the best experiences, is competing in an academic environment. And I tell them later on in life that you will, you'll be wanting this pile of cash on there when you go for an interview, and the nervousness that you're going to have when you get down there is going to, you know, help you a lot later on in life. And so fortunately, we have a lot of winners here tonight. Will Jaeger has agreed to come on up and just kind of talk about his experience a little bit. We asked our state champion Max Polifka back there, but he declined.
Hello, my name is Will. This is my second year competing at Skills USA, a junior at Downers Grove South, and it's such a unique experience. Like, it is something like you would not even like imagine about doing. And it's like a day-long competition, like, well, like six hours maybe. And there's so many components to it. It's like drafting online. It's all these different things. You have hand sketches, personal interviews. And it's such, like, it teaches you a lot to like work through being nervous, which is very, like I'm doing right now, very helpful in your life and everything. But it was a really fun experience, and I'm glad to be involved with it. Super fun, and like, we have a ton of stuff planned along with it, like go-karting. We have overnight in the hotel. So, can't speak on that. Yep. But, um, yeah, it was a very fun experience for me.
Hello, my name is Brandy Palmerin, and I brought the engineering students with us. So we placed third and sixth. We had two teams of three, which we did really, really well, considering how stiff I felt like the competition was this year. And like I always say, it's good for students to be involved in this because it gives them something to put, like, on their college applications, some real-life experiences. So, and we also had some 3D design animation kids that Mr. Almberg coached as well. So, um, did you want to say, okay, I'm going to bring up Matthew Lynn. He's going to tell you, talk a little bit about his project and experience for him.
How's it going? My name is Matthew Lynn. I'm a graduated senior at Downers Grove South. I suppose I'm the lone representative of the students for engineering. But over the course of the year, of the, of the school year, we worked on a very large, real-world engineering project. I think my team and, like, personally, we went through like 20 prototypes of our, of our project before finally going down to Skills USA and presenting in front of a panel of engineering judges.
And what was the subject of your project?
So ours was actually an interesting one. We did school safety. My team, we designed, we designed a, basically an automatic deadbolt that would serve to reinforce a door, kind of like a quick reaction type of thing. So, a blue-point system goes off, teacher can just press a button, and locks down all the doors in the, in the room. So, that's, that's what our project was.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, that's it from us.
Wait, wait, wait. Can we recognize the students you have here?
Sure.
In the room? We could just go with that slide first.
Okay. Go ahead, Charlotte and Cam, want to come on up? Do you want to, like, wait or do you want?
Yeah, they could wait.
Yeah, there we go. And then, they're right there.
Actually, we're not going to have them come up for the picture because the pictures turn out terrible. We're going to do pictures outside where it's pretty with, with our, with students.
Okay, great. And then we saw Matthew. So that was mine. And then, I don't know.
I don't see any of the 3D students here, so we'll go with the architecture students. In sixth place, we have sophomore Aiden Vano. In fourth place, we have Gabia Gododaris. Third place, we have junior Will Jaeger. Second place, we have Claudia Godowski, graduated senior. And our, our state champion, he came with his brother, who claims they taught him everything. He took the top 10 a couple of years ago, and then Max is our state champion for Downers Grove. Thank you once again.
Mark, the architectural design projects, I, I think I remember this from last year, but for the sake of the other board members who are new, can you just explain, like, what that competition entails and how it's structured?
So the students are given a prompt. There's two or three hand drawings that they'll give them. So it could be maybe looking at an isometric drawing, and then drawing the top view or side view, maybe creating a building section drawing by hand. We kind of stink at that, I'm not going to lie. And that's the part that we have to work on all the time. And then, just some visualization and things like that. We also prepare a resume before we go. So they make it a very user-friendly environment. The kids are allowed to talk to each other. It's a working environment. So in the middle of that, they'll bring them up, and they'll go through an interview process. They'll go through their resume, and they'll ask them some questions. There'll also be a 50, 50-question vocabulary basically tested to vary. And, and in between all that, between 8:00 and 2:30, they're giving a floor plan and elevation, possibly a section or something along those lines that they'll generate in Revit, which we use. So they are ver, they are exhausted. They get lunch in there for a half hour. We kind of meet at lunch, talk about what's going on, regroup a little bit, then they go back in there. Sometimes we have tears, sometimes we have success. And the last couple of years, we've had some power issues where the power got knocked out and all of our, we lost all of our projects. And so, we had fixed, we worked through that, and the girl who won last year actually ended up being the national champion, but she was on a laptop. She didn't lose any of her work. So, not to make any excuses last year, but we did work through that. So, it is a really good, and then the engineering students as well. It's a long process to get through to the end, and 3D design students spend about six hours on their project as well. So, we get our money's worth, for sure, and they're, they're tired and ready to go go-karting and eat Italian food when we're done. So.
And do a lot of your students end up, like, pursuing engineering and architecture and in?
I would say the majority of the ones that are in this level, I mean, we, we took 25 students down there, but in the majority of them are going to be pursuing a career in architecture, for sure. Yeah.
That's great.
Or engineering, or 3D design. There's lots of fields down there. We just kind of focus on these, these three areas as, as far as we go.
That's great. All right, could you bring up Max?
Max, it's your day, bud.
I know you, I know you didn't want to say anything, but he's got to come up and get awards. Max, I have two proclamations for you, one from the Village of Downers Grove and the Mayor Bob Barnett, who ultimately proclaims Tuesday, May 20th, as a day in your honor. And then the Vill- Village of Woodridge also has provided a proclamation, and you didn't know it, but today has been named in your honor in Woodridge. So Mayor Cunningham has declared today in your honor. So congratulations.
Nice job, Kim.
Well, now, now they're not going to want to win state championships.
You thought you were going to be able to hide in the van? You already got me.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you all for coming this evening. All of our awardees will go out with Ms. Browning, and she will find a nice location, get pictures of everybody, so we can post and celebrate you guys online as well. It is a public meeting. You're welcome to stick around for the rest of the night, but if you make it out for pictures and continue going, I'll totally understand. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for representing. All right, we have a couple other students to recognize this evening. Rohan and Jason. I will give you both the opportunity for any final comments before we talk about you a little bit.
I'll go first? Yeah. All right. Do I just?
Yeah, just talk.
Advice? All right. Well, I just want to start off by saying that it's been a pleasure being here. No other place I'd rather spend the first and third Monday. No, but it really has been great. I mean, I've always laughed, found it interesting, and been able to relate to a lot of topics talked about. And I am sad. A little bit of advice, like, to anyone, if you're watching on YouTube, or to anyone here, but if graduating has taught me anything, is to live life to the fullest, to live and be yourself just every day, because time goes by really fast, and enjoy every minute. Yeah, that's going to be it.
What are you doing next year?
I am going to be going to Illinois State University to study accounting and pre-law.
Go Redbirds.
You got a fan over there.
I'll start by saying the same. It's been an absolute pleasure to be here and, you know, share my reports with you guys every week. And, you know, it's given me an opportunity to help the community in the, in a way that, like, I wouldn't be able to otherwise. And it's given me a lot of practice in that sense. And so, going on into the future, it's going to help me, you know, be a part of more communities and help more communities. So I really want to thank you guys for that experience as well. And, you know, it's just been an absolutely amazing experience, just, you know, coming here and being able to talk about, you know, different things and different, and seeing all the interesting things that you guys are presenting as well. So, thank you, guys.
And your plans for next year?
I'm going to Champaign, University of Illinois, for, and I'm studying for data science, pre-law.
Great, great. Congratulations both, and thank you for all of your service over the course of the year. I know sometimes we just put you on the spot and ask you to tell us what you think, and we appreciate you coming prepared and, you know, sharing the student perspective of how things are going in the building. It's great to have you here and for your perspectives every time we meet. So thank you both. I have a little token of appreciation for you two. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Anything from board members?
Thanks, guys, for being here. I think it's amazing that we have student board members. And from what I understand, it's a relatively new.
Very unique.
Yeah. So, it's amazing, and it's so important to hear your perspective. So, thank you for being here.
You can always count on us being honest.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, it's great. And I don't really believe you that this is your favorite place to be, but, but that's a sacrifice.
He's getting ready for law, so, I mean, you got to take that into perspective.
Thank you so much.
I'm not, I'm not a Redbird fan, but I'm an accounting fan because I'm an accounting major. So, yeah, so, so I appreciate, yeah, so it's, yeah, I'm a pre-law tutor. It's awesome.
I want to thank you guys, too. You guys, over the course of the last year, we've had the opportunity to watch you grow and become more and more comfortable every week, every month, as you, you know, present and your professionalism, your dress, your hair, you're impeccable. I mean, you guys are really ready to rock and roll, and I'm so proud of you as graduates of Downers Grove and moving on. You'll represent the community, the high schools, and yourself and your family very well at the next level. So I just wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. All right, I'd like Courtney and Arlen to come forward and introduce next year's student board members.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see all of you. I am really, really happy to introduce our new student board member, Ryan Enright. Ryan was among many candidates who applied for this position, which we are really excited about. Every year, we have a lot of students who are really interested. And so, but Ryan stuck out this year, and I remember Mr. Mirandola and I interviewed all the candidates, and Ryan talked about so many experiences that he has had at North High School, but also how he's interested in helping the community. And it just really stuck out to both of us. Ryan has participated in internship at North High School. I believe you're planning on doing internship again next year, has an internship this summer, and is really interested in the business pathway, and talked a lot about his actual, like, your five to 10-year plans for what he is going to do. He knows already, which is amazing. And so, he really impressed us, and we're just really excited that he's going to be joining us. He is currently playing volleyball as well on our varsity volleyball team, which is also doing really well. So he is a busy student, but also very community-minded and is very excited to be here. So I'm excited to welcome Ryan to our board.
Hi, everyone. So it's really good to be here. I want to take this time to thank Dr. Demet for this opportunity, and kind of choosing me. I'm so excited to be here. Like Dr. Demet said, I'm so busy with volleyball season. It's going really well. I've had a broad experience. I'm involved here at DECA, Student Council, Art Club, internships. So I had a commercial real estate internship this fall. I'm pursuing a residential real estate internship this summer. And then, next fall, Mr. Vaca, I don't know if you guys have met him, he's part of the internship program. He's finding me another internship for that opportunity. So, I do want to go into the business path, something in real estate. I'm really interested in kind of that, that network of selling and buying and kind of putting two parties together. So I'm just really interested in that. So I just want to take this time to thank everybody for this opportunity. And I'm so excited to provide a student perspective on this board. So thank you.
These guys got to make it through their last meeting. Just because they graduated doesn't mean they get to leave early.
Hi again. I have the pleasure of introducing Romina Papaverro Gonzalez. I would want to point out that there are three generations of her family here tonight. Mom and grandma are joining her as well. I interviewed to choose our student board rep with our associate principal, Mr. Davis, and then our associate principal, Mr. Murphy, and activities director, Ms. Martinez. And every year, we kind of start, and we're like, this is going to be the hardest decision we make, because we have such strong students. This year, we had 14 students apply and interview, and all of our students did a phenomenal job, but this year, the decision was not hard. Romina rose to the top of what was already a very high-caliber pool. And what, what had Romina stand out the most to me and my team was her genuine passion and love for Downers Grove South. So not only does she love Downers South, and she commits her whole heart and soul to both activities and athletics, so very well-rounded, but she's also able to talk about the importance of never-ending improvement as well. So not just a, "I'm so happy, I love it," period, but a, "I'm so happy, I love it, how can I make it better for every single student?" We were so inspired by that. I had to make a list of everything you're involved in because I could not memorize it. So I'm just going to introduce you that way, and then you can give some highlights. So, Romina is the vice president of Key Club. She's involved in Athletes Committed to Excellent, Class Board, and French Club, is a PE leader, a Mustang Way leader, a Student Activities Leadership Committee leader, and a member of NHS, and her third year playing soccer. So we're very, very proud of all the things you've done, and congratulations and welcome.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm so excited to be here. Thank you, Ms. Lip. Oh, where are you? Thank you, Ms. Lip, so much for this opportunity. I feel so lucky to be able to contribute to this amazing community that I feel so connected to and that has truly given me so much. So again, thank you so much for this. I re, I'm really excited for next year, and I really look forward to it. And even like seeing your guys as dynamic right now, I'm so excited to be part of this family, and I'm truly looking forward to contributing a student perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, our students, we have meetings all summer, and we expect you to be there two hours early. No, you, you're not required to start showing up until the next four years, but you're always welcome to attend any meeting you would like to. So, welcome to the team.
All right, moving on to the more bunt dane.
What are you talking about? Approval of minutes is always exciting.
Yes, yes, exactly. Can I get a motion from the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the May 5, 2025 workshop meeting, the May 5, 2025 organizational meeting, workshop meeting, and the May 5, 2025 closed meeting? So moved.
Second.
Chris moves. Kara seconds.
Thank you very much. Chris Raspinoza.
Aye.
Kara Caston.
Aye.
Katie Courtney.
Aye.
Ken Dawson.
Aye.
April Feinen.
Aye.
Michael Risky.
Aye.
And Don Runner.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Julie, first receptions of visitors, do we have any slips?
No, sir.
Okay. And I'm going to turn it over to Hank for item number six. All right, six is actually yours. Is it? No, it's board committee liaison appointments. Oh, well, the first one, yeah. Okay. So we have assigned committees amongst board members. Ken Dawson is going to stay on IASB. Kara Caston and Michael Risky will handle Len. April Feinen, Katie Courtney will handle the foundation, and Chris will stay with, uh- You're on policy. Yes. Well, no, but also- Oh, SACID. SACID, yes. Chris will be on SACID, and then Chris and I will also be on the policy committee. So that'll be the assignments for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year. Thanks for everybody getting back, and hopefully that those assignments will work out well.
All right. Next one is, is the consolidated district plan. Gina's returning from last meeting to provide updates on tonight's action item.
Okay, so as I presented earlier this month, the consolidated district plan includes several different parts. Basically, it is the same as what I presented last time. The only difference, I did mention last time, but in writing, it was not accurate, because we had a newly approved dual-credit course. So the one change is on page one, where it now says 18 dual-credit course. The remainder of the document, the remainder of the plan is as was previously presented.
Okay.
Any questions?
Don't think so.
Thank you.
All right. That'll be an action item, as I mentioned. All right. This one also returns from our last meeting, statement of work for the next school year. This is really asking the board to focus our top priority in our administrative and thus our district's work for next year. I just want to draw kind of a through line from how the statement of work connects back to the strategic plan. The strategic plan is available on our website under About Us. There's a little tab there. You can see it in green. If you click on that, you'll get to the full strategic plan. Within the strategic plan, there are four strategic directions. Under each of those strategic directions are expectations, and then supporting each of those are the measurables. Those are the indicators. So that's how our strategic plan is built. The directions are the big, kind of overarching statements. The expectations are the details. The indicators are the measurables. Our primary folk, our priority focus that we're recommending for next year falls under the domain of growth of student ownership and agency, and falls under the measure of success around attendance. The board received an update on this in December, but then, you know, in the statement of work, you'll see how there's other things that support improving student attendance. In December, these reports came to you that talked about things like chronic absenteeism and how we compared to the state of Illinois. I know returning board members remember this, but our new board members may not be familiar with these reports. So in December, our team came and provided you this kind of data. They provided some data on how chronic absenteeism in District 99 compares to the county and to the state, and then showed a few of our internal tools for keeping track and monitoring these metrics in our Five Lab data dashboard, and some of the other things beyond that overarching chronic absenteeism metric, which is a state-determined metric. Some of the other things that we look at internally to track attendance, and I would imagine that many of these internal measures will be looked at to hopefully and intentionally improve our overall absenteeism rate and our chronic absenteeism rate. So that leads us to this. As you know, this was distilled out of a lot of feedback that came from our staff. This is the proposed statement of work, so improvement in the area of attendance, driven by increased accountability, consistency, and consequences, paired with interventions and supports. Reminder that interventions and supports was the top priority just from board members in isolation, where attendance was staff and administration, so those two pair nicely together. We believe that through this, student academic performance will include, improve, along with staff morale, and this will be demonstrated by all of the indicators and measures we bring you throughout the next school year. After we met the last time, I indicated that we would go out and survey the entire staff on their thoughts around this statement of work and if they could support it. So you can see there was three choices. Yes, absolutely the right choice, hands down, kind of. The next option was yes, I have some concerns, but I can get behind this. And then, no, I have significant concerns that this is not addressing. So you can see the percentage in the pie graph and in the table as well, as well as the overall number of responses, with 158 responses overall, which isn't bad considering we're in the last few weeks of the school year. I did use a little bit of AI to help me distill out kind of amongst those respondents what the key ideas or themes were from each of those. So I've provided that for you, so you can see what's there. We've already pulled out that information in detail, assuming that the board approves this tonight. We already have a professional development session set up with our administrative team and our deans, some of our instructional leaders tomorrow. They have been the expert researcher that's coming in to present to us tomorrow, has seen all of the responses from our staff, so that they could tailor that professional learning to the concerns of our staff. And it's also was disaggregated by response, so that they could respond to those particularly and are prepared to do so as we start to plan and build out our steps for next year. Building that out, this is the timeline of work over the summer that would kick off tomorrow, pending board approval tonight. So- So presentation by EAB on absenteeism, and you can see a lot of administrative planning happening from the end of May through the middle of May. The next time that we're back in public is June 16th. We'll provide you kind of a draft overview of work plans, so the work that we'll do over the next few weeks to outline our work over the summer. Then we'll check back in as a leadership team in the middle of July. We'll provide you an update at the end of July of how the summer work is going. Then all of our leadership team is back on August 8th. We will have EAB in for part of that time as well to work with our teams. Staff return on August 13th to 15th. You could imagine between the work in Infinite Campus, our new student information system and the training on that, a lot of that is attached to attendance. We'll have a lot of pieces in there and then our students return on August 18th and we get to work with these new strategies. One of them was already underway today. Phil Howard, the tech team and our administrative team, our deans and security all worked together to get up and running a dry run of student scanning as students came in. I was over at South High this morning and saw it underway and, you know, our kids rarely disappoint and they didn't today. They came in and they were ready to go and had their IDs ready, or physical or virtual, and were ready to go and it worked pretty seamlessly to start the day here. So if it worked on day one, I would imagine, you know, by day three, it'll be old hat. So already starting to work on some of those strategies for next year. So at that point, I'll take any questions. As I mentioned, I'll be asking you to take action on that later this evening.
No questions, but I appreciate your attention to the issue because I know it's something that a lot of staff members have raised concerns about, so I think it's going to be a good area of focus for the next year.
Is the computer program, right, because you're switching over, do the teachers have access to that now? Because I know as you introduce programming, it's only through the use of the program that you're going to find the right questions. So will they'll have time the rest of the school year so that when it comes to training, they'll bring with them some knowledge of concerns, questions?
Not for the, this is not like general staff yet. No, no, this, and it's only, there's only three days left. So there's not a lot of, you know, most staffers, this is not, even if they gave, had access, this isn't where they would be spending their time right now. So we'll have, we've done some training on, you know, the sandbox and those kinds of things as we've rolled out, getting ready for next year. But then the more intensive training in the real system will be there when they come back in the fall.
Did you see more phone IDs or did you see a lot of kids scanning their...
In the areas that I was at, I saw more phone IDs than physical IDs. Yeah, yeah. I don't know, Courtney, Marwin?
A lot of the kids had already downloaded the app, I noticed this morning, so lots of kids using their phones. Yeah.
The one thing that we noticed too is that most of our students already have a digital five star ID because they have the Barco networks too. So there were actually three options for students, their physical ID, their digital five star ID that a lot of students have been using all year and the app. So that was kind of a nice, almost surprise for the students who didn't have a physical ID and who hadn't downloaded the app. That did work for them too, so that was nice.
What about our two incoming students? You guys had to scan in today, any thoughts?
It went really well. For me, I went through the maintenance. There was a little bit of a line when the light cycle came through. Other than that, I think it went really well. Everyone had their app loaded up, everything was loading very well. I think, you know, that initial, oh, I have to scan in, whatever. But I think once you get two or three days into that, I know we're at the end of the school year, but I think next year going into that, you guys might see that and it will be very good for tracking attendance and getting that mainstream under.
Yeah, I also went in through the maintenance this morning. I came in a little earlier because I have a repurposed P, but it worked really well. I used my physical ID because I just had it in my hand, it was just easier. But I saw a lot of people using their phones and it was, it went by very quickly, there wasn't a line at all. And it's pretty like easy self-explanatory, so I think it's going to work really well to help the issue next year.
Thank you, Bob.
Was today just getting into school and then next year it'll be your classes and all that? Okay, so today was just in?
Yeah, today's the first try run, that first step. Yep, making sure it all works.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
What is stopping a kid from, this is obviously just like rudimentary, but like what is stopping a kid from scanning someone else's ID?
Yeah, it's a great question. So the staff member that's standing there in front of the scanners, when they scan in, the picture of the student comes up.
Oh, so there's someone watching, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, I was watching it today. It's pretty seamless and it's instantaneous in how it loads.
If you want to add to, I think that if that happened in the morning and no one caught it, which shouldn't happen, but if it did, because you're going to be scanning in every classroom and your teachers would go away, did you, I guess, like the safe, do you have to have your ID for the class?
All right, any other questions? All right, that's an action item as well this evening. Regular transportation services updates. I'll turn this over to jury.
Okay, well, this is, this also is an action item tonight. We'll be seeking approval of awarding the Regular Education Transportation Agreement to first student. The work behind this bid started last fall, if not before, and it takes quite a bit of work. We have three superintendents and then three business offices that we work together to put together this, this contract. It's worked very well for the last 10 years. It has saved the three districts a large sum of money. And so we, we put the same type of bid that together for this time as, as we did back in 2014. We have, between the three districts, we have about 140 routes that we work with and there's about 80 buses. So it's pretty complex. We have to tier our routes to make it all work out. When we went to the hybrid block schedule and our times changed, Dr. Thiele met with the other two superintendents and 68 made a small change in their start time in that just so that we could continue with this great savings. The only items that I'd like to point out in this agreement is that we made certain that our, within our bid specs, that we wanted to continue with our competitive wages and benefits for our drivers. In my opinion, we've been leaders in this area. We've not had a shortage of drivers like so many other districts have because we have increased the wages for our drivers over the past 10 years. The other, other piece that District 68 really was interested in including in this bid is the implementation of an enhanced technology system. This system will help with route efficiency and then also in the future, when we have it, it'll be for student onboarding. So especially with the elementary districts, the students will scan and that there'll be a record of who is actually on the bus on that given day. So those are the only two things that I think are important to point out. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is that system you're just talking, is that a first, is that First Student manages that or is that our?
No, it'd be First Student.
First Student manages that, okay.
Right now, we have First View for parents and the high school students, not the elementary students, where they can download the app and they can actually see where the bus is.
Okay.
And, you know, so go out and get ready for it. Not too many of the high school students actually use it. It's more of the younger students, their parents are using it.
And so the change is what then, between that and...
That we'll keep, but then we are asked, we've asked for this technology to be installed on all the buses so that the students can scan when they board the bus.
Okay. Do they have an ID, like the younger kids, do they have an ID that they scan?
Mm-hmm. And if they don't, the elementary districts are wanting this.
Okay, good. That'll help with knowing which kids are on the bus when and making sure all the kids have gotten off the bus.
Right.
Yeah.
It'll also help us, you know, in balancing routes and those kinds of things of knowing exactly how many kids are on each bus and those kinds of things.
Who has our transportation contract now?
First Student.
Okay, so we're continuing the same. My only question is regarding the overlap in timing at dismissal. I understand that some of the high school kids are waiting for the buses to arrive because they're wrapping up their elementary routes. Is anything changing going forward? Are they adding more buses or is it kind of just that is what it is?
Probably not. We have four buses that run about 10 minutes later than the others.
Okay. And it's not, it's not a huge delay, you know, it's, when I hear from the high school kids, it, they make it sound worse than it is. It's 15, 20 minutes.
At the beginning of the school year, it is a longer, it is a longer.
Because they're putting together, they're getting, finalizing their routes and becoming more efficient?
Many times it's because the, for the kindergartners to get off the bus, there has to be an adult and a lot of times the adults are not there and so the buses can't leave until an adult shows up, so it holds those buses up. That's generally what the problem is.
Sure, okay.
At the beginning of the year.
Got it.
Thank you.
What are the other two districts?
58 and 68, so Downers Grove and Woodbridge.
I've got some giant numbers questions if you're, if you could repeat. The, I think I saw, so the first year like a four, four and a quarter percent and then subsequent, four percent increases thereafter.
Yes.
Those are just on the route rates, right? Because there's also like that 325 pay grade per gallon for diesel fuel, right? So, which for everybody, it's any amount over that per gallon, we reimburse some of the excess. Is that, and now I saw that was flat throughout the five years, is that customary or, and is that, did that get increased from prior contract or is, I'm just curious, where was that? It's now 325, was it that before?
We made a small change. Was it about five cents?
I think so, but yeah, I think it did change.
I think it was 320, I think.
Okay. And is that customary then to keep it flat throughout? Because I know there's also the percentage also, which obviously for wages, et cetera, and other costs, but I didn't know if there was customary to...
It is. We have that with Sunrise, our special education transportation provider too, and it's been the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there was an increase on it?
It's not a large amount that we, but we do, you know, have for the last few years.
With the price, because I'm assuming most of them are diesel rights, the way diesel prices have been, it's, that's, you've been paying that excess for all the last couple years, I imagine.
But it's not a, it's not a large amount.
Okay, good, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
And any other questions for jury? This also is an action item. Next one is also juries, English Department novels.
This is just pretty standard. Every spring, our English teachers select the titles of novels that they're going to use for the next school year and to get some great competitive pricing, we go out for bid for all these titles. And as you can see, we have, I think there were 10 different bidders this time and Book Pal submitted the lowest bid out of all of them. They have for a number of years and we've been very pleased with the service that we receive from them. With this, with the bid specs, what we do to try to make it easier for the buildings is we request that the vendor box up all of the titles into a box, put the teacher's name on it and put the room number on it so that it's very easy for those to be delivered to the rooms, save some time in that. It's a little bit of extra work for the provider to have to do that, but Book Pal has done a great job at that, so we are recommending Book Pal once again.
That's just a question because this just came with my daughter. So like, we do, this is annual, right? So what do you do with those books at the end? And I'm curious, like what you guys do, so she had her, these are like the paperback books you're reading in English, right?
Yeah.
Like, I was like, what, I mean, some of them unfortunately are like underlined and all that, so maybe.
For the most part, the students keep the books because the idea is that we want them to annotate and really interact with the, with the titles. We do have some titles that, because oftentimes it might be difficult to get, that we might check out to students. Those are the more rare books or those that are harder to obtain, but for the most part, students keep the novels.
Okay. But then when they're done at the end of the year, is there any like use of, that was my thing, it was like, I'd like to think they're going to go back and read them, but maybe not.
I don't know.
So is there...
They'll go on to them.
Don't you keep them from first?
I agree.
They're all on like one shelf for me.
They're still having them?
I still have every single book, but...
What'd you do with your books?
I have a few, but my mom has donated them.
Yeah, okay. All right. But there's no, it's no system of recycling. Okay, just curious because it literally just came up.
You think of them almost like workbooks.
Okay, yeah, okay.
All right, any other questions on English Department novels? All right. Drivers Ed Vehicles, this is Travis's and also is an action item this evening. Lots of action items this evening.
Lots of action. Thank you, guys. I know this is a continuation from last month's presentation that Dr. Thiele provided on different energy conservation work that we're doing, as well as, if you remember back in January when we started talking about capital, we talked about the need to replace two drivers ed vehicles. So we want to talk about our plans for this summer. We are going to continue and purchase two vehicles to replace our older Ford Fusion vehicles. And then what we're planning on doing with, with our fleet is moving it around a little bit. We've had our Ford Transit Connect, which is a smaller van that we cannot use for any passengers, and that has been used to, by our mechanic to go around and deliver different things, pick up things. He had the great idea, Luke, Luke has done a great job in our garage and he had the great idea of taking one of the drivers ed vehicles and making that, that vehicle that he can use and go around, but it also then, if he needs to work on a drivers ed vehicle, he can leave that drivers ed vehicle there and then service the other drivers ed vehicle because right now if anything happens to a drivers ed vehicle, we're down one. Or if any maintenance needs to happen, which he does a great job of making sure it doesn't interfere, but that provides us with some additional flexibility. So we're looking at selling or trading in that Ford Transit as well as, I will say, the worst of the two Ford Fusions. We feel like the Ford Fusion number four, we can utilize for one more year and you'll see with our 26 summer plans, we plan on setting that out to pasture as well in our use, right? So that's our, that's our plans this summer. And as you know, if you can go to the next slide, as you know, we are waiting to hear if this $300,000 for LED lighting and EV charger installation is going to be realized or not. So early June, we should hear whether that is going to be secured. It has been submitted as long as the state budget gets approved, as is, then that, those funds have been committed to us for those, those reasons. So we are very hopeful, but you always want to make a Plan A and a Plan B. So Plan A would be to utilize that those funds, purchase two EVs, and this is again using some different things that we have the COMEd's Business and Public Sector Electric Vehicle Rebate Program that we would utilize. And that is not only for, for the purchase, but then you can also see in the second part, COMEd's Business and Public Sector Make Ready Rebate Program that helps with the rebates on the installation of the chargers themselves. So we're looking at, that, that definitely would be our first option that we want to put into place. And you can see I have a cost not to exceed $98,000 and that's for the vehicles, but also realize that there would be $25,000 in post purchase rebates that we would receive after we made the, the purchase of those vehicles. So we're still looking at, at several different options there. That would be again, a cost not to exceed. I do not anticipate spending that entire amount, but we wanted to make sure with the timing and everything that once we find out in early June, that we can go and then we can have those ready for the beginning of the, of the school year. So it's a little bit different in how we would go about it than normal, where we would normally say, here's what we're purchasing, right? But because of the caveat of, of not knowing about this additional funding opportunity, this is... But because of the caveat of, of not knowing about this additional funding opportunity, this is the, the approach that we're looking at doing. Any questions on Plan A before I move on to Plan B? Okay. So Plan B, don't receive that $300,000 of funding. We would continue to, to utilize, I, I went through earlier this year and secured fleet pricing. So we would utilize that to purchase two of our, I put internal combustion engines, right? A, a regular gas vehicle for use in our drivers ed vehicle. And that cost would not exceed $68,000 in, in looking at that. So again, when you look at the EV part, we're at 98, again with $25,000 coming off, so there's not that much of a difference in the vehicles themselves. And then the infrastructure, we would have some rebates there as well. So, and we have those lined up. We know which ones we would get. We've been working with the dealer. We would have no problem getting that if we placed it early in June to be able to get those in here ready for the start of the school year. Any questions about Plan B? Okay. And then the, the final thing is, oh.
Yeah, on the Plan A, the, if you're considering a Tesla, the Tesla Charger, to my knowledge, is only to be utilized for Tesla vehicles. If we do install a Tesla Charger, then are we stuck utilizing Tesla vehicles in perpetuity?
No, we're not. So there's, there's a couple of different options. One, one is the Tesla Charger itself, right? Used to be proprietary to Tesla. That is no longer the case.
Okay.
Actually, a lot of the vehicles now that manufacturers are making are putting that type of a Charger, the receptile, the receptor into their vehicles. So it is across the board, but what we would look at, Tesla also has a Charger that can do both, both of the different adapters.
Okay.
So that's the one that we would look at because we don't know what the, what the future holds with those and it gives us, it would provide us with more flexibility. The, the biggest benefit that I see with the Tesla Chargers, even if we don't go with the Tesla, again, still investigating some of this, is that we can really manage the fleet and who can utilize the charge, the Charger itself. So what, time, time will tell on that as we learn more about that. I'm still, I'm trying to get a conference call set up with another manufacturer. I've been trying for about a week to, to learn about theirs more, but I'm not having much luck there, so I'm going to keep barking up that tree. But, so there, there is some flexibility there.
But there's no decision yet. You, you haven't decided. We're still working through all of our options based on Plan A, Plan B. We'd inform the board obviously as we get closer to making those decisions.
So the ask tonight is just like the ceiling.
Yep.
Right? Cause I, my view is I feel like the Tesla thing is like just super risky, like with everything that's going on right now, like all the protests and having cars in our fleet, like could they be vandalism? I just feel like that to me seems really risky. And then I, I do get the point of we want students to learn how to drive an electric car, but again, with all the like uncertainty in the market, are we gonna put ourselves in a situation where replacement parts or like, I mean, I personally actually feel like I'm leaning towards Plan B where we kind of stay the course and maybe do a hybrid. I just feel like there's a lot of, even if we get through the summer, and I know you just said that like we could get our purchases in, in June or whatever, but I mean, I'm already hearing people with delays in getting cars. And I just, with all that's happening across the country, like are we worried about that? That we're gonna put ourselves in a position that is gonna put us at a disadvantage down the road? So that's a concern for me. I'm okay with like approving a ceiling, but I just wonder if we could have more discussion around the mix of cars and types of cars that are in the, and I get it, cars, we're running out of cars and cars are end lifeing, but I don't know if anyone else like shares any of that concern? But I just wanted to voice that.
Sure, yeah. No, I appreciate it. In, in looking at the, the the inventory that's there, right, in my conversations across all options, that there, there's no, there was none expressed when I said here would be our timeline.
Right.
Right? So regardless of what path we would go, even in looking at several different EV options, that was not a concern with, with any of, so the, the inventory is not a, not a concern. It's up, I, I want to provide the best option for our kids, right? And so that's, that's the vantage point that I'm looking at. What, what's gonna best serve our kids and our infrastructure that we would put in, right? So, you know, when, when I look at the two, yes, we can certainly go Plan, Plan B, Plan A, if we have that funding. That, that's like a one-time opportunity to provide and I, you know, whether you agree or not, you know, EVs are not gonna go away. They're, they're here. The infrastructure's being supported more broadly across the United States. So I don't think we would be pigeonholing ourselves in, into anything. I don't. If we, if it was 10 years ago, I was an early adopter of an EV to just say what my, you know, I have experience in, in that. And I got out of the EV until mileage improved and were there, right? And it's, and the level of charger that we would be able to put into, we're not talking about those huge level three chargers, right, that you pull up and we're talking about a regular level two charger that runs off of a 240. It's gonna provide everything that we would need. And then if we wanted to in the future, we could, again, we're looking at the infrastructure that we could expand and put additional chargers there. We could sell charging, right, in, in the future. I wouldn't want to start that way. We just need to figure out how are we going about it? What does that look like? But that could be a potential revenue stream for us as well.
Yeah, I share your concerns as well with the, the use of Tesla as a, as a broad investment for our district, given the current state of things. I hadn't thought about vandalism in that particular context, but I'm, that, that's probably something that we should at least loosely consider. The other thing I wanted to ask, our mechanic, if we were to go to the all EV fleet, is there additional training that he's gonna have to go through that, to, to service those vehicles and, or is there like, cause I know for some of them, like you, you almost exclusively have to go through the, the manufacturer, the dealers for any maintenance. Is that gonna be like an additional unforeseen cost that we're worried about?
So on the maintenance side of things, we can do maintenance on, on those components. When you're talking about, excuse me, your traditional like brakes, tires, all of those things, right? If it comes down to the computer side of it, just like in all of our, our cars as they're getting more computer generated, there are things that we can't do. I, I can tell you that Tesla per se does have classes that they provide for mechanics, like in a fleet, so to manage your fleet. So they say, here are some additional things that you can do outside of the, the traditional brakes and, you know, wipers, all of those traditional easy maintenance type things. But certainly there would be things that, yeah, we wouldn't, we, we don't have the technology in order to be able to, to utilize that. But I would say that's also true for, for our regular gas powered vehicles as well. So we did have those conversations and, and what that, you know, might look like. There, there is a, obviously they all come with a, a warranty, right, of, of some sort. And that would be something as you go through, I mean, the electric vehicles have a lot less moving parts. So the odds of there being a major, something happen are, are less than in a regular combustion.
One in color for occasion. So our fleet would have both gas and electric?
Right.
And what, how many would be, would we ideally?
So we would, what we're doing right now is just adding two, okay? So we would do an EV at each school. So that would become part of the, the regular drivers ed program. And we have three, we would have three to four other gas vehicles at each of the, each of the schools.
So the total fleet is eight, roughly four at each school?
Yeah, probably.
And then, and apologies for ignorance, are these, are there vehicles or the charging stations, would they be housed outside, inside, up, where, do they just park down? Yeah, so, okay, they're outside.
They would be outside by where our, where our current fleet of drivers ed vehicles is parked. And if we were to do this again north, at north, it's the perfect time for us to do it because remember we're doing the paver project? And so we would be getting the power from the stadium. So right now the pavers would be up, we can go right under. It's a lot, it'll be a lot less than if we were to do it later because we'd have to bore then under, after we've done the paving work.
Last question. So does the hybrid, I had a hybrid, I have a hybrid, I also have an EV, is the teaching kids about driving electric cars more about like regenerative braking and stuff like that? Cause, or is it just, it's quieter and you have to be careful and you have to be really thinking when you back up, so you're not, you know, like, do you feel like we sort of get down that educational path further with Plan B and the hybrids still?
I, I do with the, with Plan A with, yeah.
Well, Plan A is right, isn't Plan B the hybrid?
There, there is, there is a hybrid, but there, there is no, it, there is no, it's, it's the Toyota hybrid, so it's like a Prius type of a thing, right? Which, that's what most people are, are, know about. So yes, there are, there are differences between the two.
Yep.
As well as I'll say that the funding that is, is the potential, it is for EV.
Oh, okay. There's more for the full, okay. Oh, it's not for hybrid. Okay.
It's not for hybrids.
Got it, okay.
Because it's the, again, the infrastructure that is, that is tied to that and it needed to be 100% EV.
Got it.
Couldn't make out which plan is more expensive?
So in, in the grand scheme of things, we're looking at $5,000 difference with Plan A than Plan B because of the, the funding would cover the, the other components related to the, the project.
Plan A is $5,000 more expensive?
For the vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that includes charger installation as well?
The charger installation would be separate, but again, that's what we have, that, that $300,000 in funding is going to pay for that as well as our rebates.
So 300,000 has nothing to do with the cost of the vehicles?
Correct. We are, we already had, if you remember, and I expect you to remember, but in January when we were talking about capital, we had $60,000 slated for this when we had conversations. That has even obviously gone up since, since then. So that's where we're at the $68,000 mark if we were to go gas. And then, yes, it's because of the rebates that are afforded. And I think we actually might be coming, we might be able to be at more like a $27,000 rebate after some additional conversations, so, yeah. So it's about, it's about $5,000 difference.
So A is $5,000 more than B?
Correct. For, for both vehicles, not 5,000 each.
Total, yeah, the program.
Yep.
And you said, is the 300K anticipated to fully fund the, the stations? And that's, is that, okay.
As well as other energy conservation work. So when we're talking about our stadium lighting, that would help pay for the rest of that. So if you remember when we did the Fund 90, work that we got that approved for our pavers, our paving, our field house LED lighting, our pool LED lighting and our stadium, it doesn't cover all of our stadium. This would, this additional funding would then cover the rest of our stadium lighting. So we would be able to do our, our LED lighting in our stadium replacement.
Have we done any market analysis to see if there are any other districts or high schools in the Chicago Land area which have electric cars as part of their drivers ed program or are we a leader breaking new ground and doing this?
We're, we're more on the forefront, but we're not the leaders. So there are districts that are, that have EVs as a part of their drivers education program.
And have we reached out to find out what some of the challenges that they have faced with them or it's all positive or do you know?
I, I have not reached out specifically to, to them to, to see what their experiences have been.
We haven't done a survey, but I've spoken with several superintendents around the state that have used electric vehicles and the feedback from many is just get ready, this is the direction that everything's going in, right? So nobody has said, don't do it, when I've talked to them about it, right? It's just, you know, this is, we're investing in the future, this is the way that things are going.
Yeah.
I haven't heard from anybody that said, oh, we tried it and, oh, avoid that at all costs.
It feels like it's our responsibility to, to move forward in sustainability. Like you said, this is just the way, the way we're going. I share your concerns. I haven't gotten myself an electric vehicle yet because I want to see where this is gonna go. But I think as leaders, we need to be looking forward.
And the way we're looking at is educationally, there is a difference in driving the two, you know, the two platforms. So we are teaching kids to drive and whatever car comes their way. So this provides some opportunity, learning experience as well. You're asking for $98,000, is that right?
A cost not to exceed.
And, but when I look at your memo on the cost of these vehicles, even after the, after the rebate, the EVs are still like $70,000. So what, how does that math work?
Is there post purchase? So the rebates are after you purchase, they're, they're not at time of purchase, so we have to spend that amount upfront?
Oh, so your memo's the cost of two vehicles?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Looked like it was one vehicle, I'm sorry. One on each side of town. Okay. So when I look at your Chevy Equinox outdoor estimate of $96,700, that's for two Equinoxes?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay. Then I, then I understand. I was gonna say that was a pretty expensive Chevy.
I would agree. So then looking forward to next summer, we're gonna replace another two vehicles, right? So we will have conversations about those next year, but just want to grease the wheels, if you will, that we're looking at that for next year. Then we would sell, trade in one vehicle. That would be that Ford Fusion number four that we're, that we're keeping for one more year. And then we would be transitioning our current Chevy Malibu number 86 to be used for maintenance like we, like we did. And then that would again, provide us that flexibility as well.
Do you think the newer cars, so both my kids went through the D99 drivers ed program. I thought it was great. Like, do you think the newer cars are gonna drive, encourage more kids to, like, you guys were younger, would you be like, like do other, like private companies in the area? Do kids learn on electric vehicles? I'm just curious, like when you guys learned, did you go through the district or what kind of cars did you learn on?
I went through the district.
You did?
Yeah, so I did it my junior year. I was a little bit late to it, but it was pretty flawless.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I went through Top Driver and they didn't have any electric vehicles. So I don't know, but again, this is two years ago, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be a lot different now. I don't know how it is. My sister's going into that phase, so maybe I'll let you guys know how that.
We'd be ready if that maybe drove interest in more students going through the district. We'd be able to.
I don't know what our capacity even looks like to be able to.
Gonna tout that program because it's.
A special vehicle will help with capacity.
It will help, but I think a lot of it is more about when is the soonest time that the student can get the license.
Okay, based on your age.
Gone outside. It hasn't been about the quality of the vehicle. Instead it's been about, I want to get my license as soon as possible.
I agree with that.
I don't have the concerns about Tesla, but in your memo, you said you, that wasn't your top choice of the EV anyway.
Correct.
So, on board. We'll weigh in all the factors, you know, as we move through the, the summer. But as you know, with all of the things, you mentioned all of the things going on in the world, like let's call them out, inflation, tariffs, you know, regulations, all of those kinds of things. It could be a very quick moving target for Travis staff to operate inside of, which is why we're, you know, usually we would get it lined up, like you've seen with other purchases. We'd come to you when we have that lined up, then we would, you know, go through it. But once Travis has evaluated all of the possibilities and determines if we get our full funding, that's why we're asking for the, you know, just the approval up and not to exceed. So he can, he can work with the best information that he has in the moment. We of course will keep the board informed. The board always can reach out with questions or concerns. I hear enough questions or concerns, we can always pause it and call everybody back together. Whether it's a regular meeting or if we have to call like a special meeting just to talk about this topic, we could always do that if there's enough board concern, you know, as we lay out those plans for you. But this allows us to be as nimble as possible as we work through this process. Thanks Travis.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, District Depositories. This comes to you every year. It approves the financial institutions that are authorized as district depositories. Anything more exciting than that jury that I need to add? This is also an action item this evening. This is also an action item this evening. Any questions on this? All right. Freedom of information request, we have received them, we process them and respond to them in the deadlines that are required. They're available on our website. I gotta double-check that link to make sure it didn't change with our new website, but if you go to our website and search for FOIA, you will find them.
Okay. Item number seven, the consent agenda. Before the board votes on the consent agenda, is there any agenda item a board member would like to pull out of the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none. Can I get a motion from the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes Item A, personnel report, appointment certified, leave of absence certified, transfer of position classified. Item B, personnel report, retirement administration, resignation certified, resignation classified. Item C, personnel reports, salary and benefits, wages, wage increase classified, wage increase administrative. Item D, April financial pages. Item E, student trips. Item F, 2026, '27 draft school calendar. Item G, 2024, '25 final school calendar. And item H, acceptance of donation from the estate of John Michael Brukus. Apologize if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly. So moved.
Second.
Chris moves and Ken seconds.
Thank you. Chris Rospinoza.
Aye.
Ken Dawson.
Aye.
April Feinen.
Aye.
Michael Risky.
Aye.
Kara Caston.
Aye.
Katie Courtney.
Aye.
And Don Renner.
I, motion carries and thank you to the family of the estate of John Michael Brukus. Moving on to item eight, recommendations for action. Can I get a motion from the Board of Education to approve the Illinois State Board of Education consolidated district plan as presented? So moved.
Second.
Chris moves and Kara seconds.
Thank you. Chris Rospinoza.
Aye.
Kara Caston.
Aye.
Katie Courtney.
Aye.
Ken Dawson.
Aye.
April Feinen.
Aye.
Michael Risky.
Aye.
And Don Renner.
I, motion carries. Item B, can I get a motion from the Board of Education to approve the statement of the work for the 2025, '26 school year as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ken moves, Kara seconds.
Thank you. Ken Dawson.
Aye.
Kara Cast, Kara Caston.
Aye.
Thank you. Katie Courtney.
Aye.
Chris Rospinoza.
Aye.
April Feinen.
Aye.
Michael Risky.
Aye.
And Don Renner.
I, motion carries. Item C, can I get a motion from the Board of Education to award regular education transportation services to first student? So moved.
Second.
Mike moves and, was Chris seconds?
Thank you. Michael Risky.
Aye.
Chris Rospinoza.
Aye.
April Feinen.
Aye.
Kara Caston.
Aye.
Katie Courtney.
Aye.
Ken Dawson.
Aye.
And Don Renner.
I, motion carries. Item number D, or item D, sorry. Can I get a motion from the Board of Education to award the bid for English department novels to book Powell in the amount of $121,840.91 in accordance with the specifications, instructions and requirements provided in the April 25th, 2025, request for proposal for Community High School District 99, English department novels?
So moved.
Second.
Kara moves, Chris seconds.
Thank you. Kara Caston.
Aye.
Chris Rospinoza.
Aye.
April Feinen.
Aye.
Michael Risky.
Aye.
Katie Courtney.
Aye.
Ken Dawson.
Aye.
And Don Renner.
I, motion carries. Item E, can I get a motion from the Board of Education to approve the purchase of two driver's education vehicles in an amount not to exceed $98,000?
So moved.
Second.
Ken moves, Katie seconds.
Thank you. Ken Dawson.
Aye.
Katie Courtney.
Aye.
Chris Rospinoza.
Aye.
April Feinen.
Aye.
Michael Risky.
Aye.
Kara Caston.
Aye.
And Don Renner.
I, motion carries. Item F, can I get a motion from the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing district depositories?
So moved.
Second.
Kara moves, Mike seconds.
Thank you. Kara Caston.
Aye.
Michael Risky.
Aye.
Katie Courtney.
Aye.
Ken Dawson.
Aye.
Chris Rospinoza.
Aye.
April Feinen.
Aye.
And Don Renner.
I, motion carries. Item G, can I get a motion from the Board of Education to hold a June 9th, 2025 workshop meeting entirely in closed session for the purpose of self-evaluation practices and procedures or professional ethics when meeting with a representative of a statewide association of which the district is a member? So moved.
Second.
Chris moves, Ken seconds.
Thank you very much. Chris Rospinoza.
Aye.
Ken Dawson.
Aye.
April Feinen.
Aye.
Michael Risky.
Aye.
Kara Caston.
Aye.
Katie Courtney.
Aye.
And Don Renner.
I, motion carries and that'll be a really productive meeting, I'm looking forward to it. Hank, any old business?
Nope.
Any new business?
No.
Julie, do we have any slips for the second reception of visitors?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving to item 12, communications and announcements. Do we have anything to report on Len, Kara and/or Mike?
Um, we have, I, so, sorry, it was not prepared. So we have a meeting tomorrow, an in-person meeting tomorrow.
Friday.
Friday, right, Friday.
You jump in a few days.
Sorry. I will have a better update on Friday. I did not attend the last meeting, but I think Jenny reported on the last.
She did.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, so sorry. Long way of saying we have a meeting Friday.
Meeting Friday, a lot of work on dual credit legislation, so I've been spending a lot of time on that and I.
Yep.
It should be good report out, I'm hoping, on Friday on that.
And the cell phone policy seems?
Haven't heard anything.
Yeah, okay.
Other than what I shared with the whole staff a couple weeks ago. Yep.
But they feel like it will move?
That's a priority of the governor, so I would anticipate so in the political dynamics of Springfield right now.
Right, okay.
However, I'm, I have major concerns about that legislation and the fact that managing it will probably be burdensome on our staff in the fact that pretty much any medical practitioner could write a.
Oh, right.
A note that would allow a student to use their phone in class, which I think opens up even greater concerns than what our current policy is now. So we'll see where, how it ends up and what date it has to go into effect. I, I believe there will be legislation, it's always the details that concern me in any legislation that we get.
As drafted, it's to apply to the '26, '27 school year, right?
Correct. So there's a year of implementation, so we would probably get our own thing underway that didn't conflict with it in any way. We've committed to our staff of giving them a, some more management options for next year. We just don't wanna go in anything, any direction that would ultimately conflict with law, so that's why we're kinda just waiting to see how this shakes out.